Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be aware of the fire exits. They're to your left of the room. In case of an emergency, please move in a calm and orderly manner and please do not take the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record and minutes, so anytime that you come to the podium, please speak into the microphone, identify yourself each time you come to the podium. The board will follow the items in the order they appear on the agenda, extra copies which should be near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant and/or representative shall come to the podium, identify themselves, give their address, and then present their case. Planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. If the case is a public hearing, it will be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding this matter, regarding this application, will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions to the board and only to the board. Once all the public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to the public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to the public input and the board will then move on to a decision. No further input will be allowed at that point. With that, will you please call the first case?
First item on the agenda is case number PB 1912-1. Upon the matter of request by Bergman Associates acting as agent for Rochester Management, Inc. for preliminary final site plan subdivision approval, steep slope and woodlot environmental protection overlay district permit approval, to construct a new three-story, 80-unit multifamily senior housing complex with site-related improvements on premises 2590 and 2662 Culver Road in an R5 residential district.
Thank you. Before I ask the applicant to start addressing the board, I just want to make sure before they come to the podium to present any new information they have and propose modifications to the site plan, I want to update the audience to ensure that you understand, and everybody at home that's watching, about a site plan modification that is based on discussion at the planning board workshop. It took place after several members of the board actually did a site walk. In that discussion, we asked the applicant to revisit the initially proposed access to the existing stub road on Hulda Park. It is my understanding that neither the zoning change approved by the town board nor the area variances granted by the zoning board of approval contained any conditions related to a private access drive to Culver Road. So to be clear, the applicant is presenting plans tonight that reflect the planning board's proposed modification to the site access. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Andy Hart with Bergman Associates. Here with me tonight is Peggy Hill from RMI, the traffic engineer, David Cruzy, and also the architects from SWBR, Dan Gladding and Jessica Wade, so here to answer any questions the board may have. Since our last meeting last month, we've been busy making some changes based on comments provided from different agencies, both Conservation Board, Planning Board, Town Engineer, the Fire District, and as well as the Emergency Ambulance District as well. We have also received a variance since our last meeting, two variances, one for parking, 68 parking spaces and a height of maximum of 39 feet. As the chairman did mention, we have revised our site plan that we submitted that shows an entrance off Hulda Park in lieu of the large, long Culver Road entrance, so we've adjusted the plans to show that. Some other minor changes that we've made to the plans since our last meeting, based on comments from the board. We have enlarged our dumpster enclosure so that we could put our emergency generator inside that enclosure, so it'll be enclosed to help with sound. We have shortened the fire access roads around the east and west sides of the building. This was per a meeting we had with the Fire District. They are allowing us to reduce those blanks based on their comments. We've also, on Carl Sam Drive, we have pushed the gate. There's an emergency gate on that side that the Fire District's requested. We've kind of pushed that gate to the west, further away from the end of that road, so it's out of the way. We've also added signage to show that there'll be no parking there and no snow to be piled there, where we'll plow the snow. We have added some handrails along the backside of the trail where the steep slopes are to help keep people on the trail and so they don't accidentally fall off into the steeper slopes. We had selected and specified a concrete grass paver for the fire access that's on the drawings as well, and I did bring a cut sheet with me if the board would like to see it as well. We did eliminate the internal gate that we had in our parking to the southwest edge of the parking lot. There was an internal fire gate. We've decided to eliminate that for ease of purpose of access to the site, so that's now gone. We did revise our traffic study and the traffic engineer is here to answer any questions should the board have as well. And we did take into account the majority of the Conservation Board comments as well.
And as you go through your presentation, if you're going to refer to the maps, will you make sure you call out the number for us?
Sure, sure.
And if you could, make sure you include going over the lighting and landscaping plan in a little bit more detail.
Sure, absolutely. In terms of the site, on site plan C101, I believe it is, yes, C101, you can see the new Hulda Park entry here instead of off to Culver Road. The dumpster's still in the same location as it was prior, it's just a little larger now so that we can have two dumpsters and the generator to the back of the dumpsters, so we house all that in an enclosed masonry enclosure. The detail is on the landscape plan, so you can go, I think that's L501, if I remember correctly, has the detail for that structure. As we mentioned before, these, before the fire access roads used to wrap around on the western side, northwest side, we've now shortened that distance up quite a bit based on the Fire Marshal's comments. And we did add some handrail right here where kind of where those steeper slopes are. On Carl Sam, the emergency gate is now 24 feet off the end of Carl Sam Drive, so it's pushed quite a distance back, 24 feet, to allow, so it's not in the way of anything on the end of Carl Sam Drive. Those are kind of the general revisions we made since the last meeting. Dan, you want to talk about?
Yeah, my name is Dan Gladding. I'm with SWBR. I live, you need address, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, 149 Gregory Hill Road in the city of Rochester, 14620. So we did meet with the Fire Marshal and the Fire Chiefs of the Culver Ridge Fire Department, went through with them, and I submitted sort of a summary of the points we talked about to make the building safe to their satisfaction. We've enclosed the central stairway, made it three stories, provided stand pipes in all three stairs, provided one extra smoke division within the building, and they were very satisfied with those measures to make the building safe in their estimation and give them the ability to properly service the building. So with those in mind, they asked us to pull back the fire road as was just described. We relocated some fire hydrants for them, places that will work better for them. There are some technical issues that will be resolved during the detailed design of the fire safety system, and that is part of our building permit process, but the site plan, they are satisfied with that operation. We also, when we heard before you last time, there were some comments about the windows, specifically the center windows on our rendering, so we did update the rendering we've given you, that we've left the windows mostly open to allow them to look a little different than the apartments, but they have sort of a prairie-style mullion pattern that was suggested to us, so there's an extra set of muntens on those windows. The pallet is otherwise what you have seen before. You will see on the floor plans the stair that we described, but otherwise, from architectural standpoint, this is the project you have been seeing. There's no substantial changes to that beyond what we just described in our discussions with the Fire Departments.
Did you give one to Michelle too, for the record?
The, getting, offering around cut sheets of the grass paver product, and we're looking at planting clover in those as a very hardy, quick-growing plant that can take a lot of abuse, doesn't need a lot of watering, doesn't need a lot of mowing. That's also what we're using to stabilize the steep slopes that the Conservation Board asked us about. Again, it's just a nice, low-maintenance plant that does its job well, so that's what we'll be using in those areas. That's all on the landscape plans. I think that may be everything, unless you've got something else, Andy? Yeah. So I think we're able to answer any questions you may have?
Mr. Huber, do you have any questions?
I looked at the landscape details and I was wondering if you had added the note on the plantings to keep the root ball moist. I didn't see it, but I didn't know if maybe I had overlooked it.
I believe on L101, on our general notes, we have some requirements for the contractor to maintain those plants in good, healthy condition before planting, which includes moistening the root balls, and then a one-year warranty on those plants after substantial completion and occupancy by the owner.
And the light fixtures in the parking lot, what is the mounted height on those?
Good question.
I think it's 22, is that right?
I think it's 22 as well, yes. That's the mounted height, so the pole's a little shorter with a concrete base.
Okay.
We did provide shields too on the neighboring sites and kept the lumens within the 4,000 max.
And you, I saw on the landscape detail that you added a bunch of evergreens on the south side, is that right? Hemlocks and white pine?
Yes, thank you. Grab our landscaping plan here. Thank you. That was a comment that came up in terms of when the building was staked out on the site, it is apparent that while there is a lot of tree cover, it is very tall and down to lower pedestrian height, it's just a lot of tree trunks, and so along the southern boundary, we have added a number of evergreen trees just to help soften, to create a bit more visual buffer between the backyards of the immediate neighbors and our project from human height. And those are Canadian hemlock planted at five to six feet height, and there's, they're in groups, there's 22 of them total, they're in groups of three, four, and five.
Got it. That's it for me.
Four questions. On those trees, what did the?
Excuse me, Chairman, would you mind moving your mic? Thank you.
Thank you. What do they eventually grow to?
You know, I don't know the maximum height on a Canadian hemlock, but we can find out that for sure. I don't believe they're very tall trees, but I would have to look.
Probably 30 feet, plus or minus.
So they're going to grow over it?
Okay.
Yes, yes.
And the only other question I have, well, two questions, I said that back. We talked about the air conditioning units are going to be within the apartments, correct?
Correct.
So for the general areas, where is the units going to be located?
What we will have is behind the building, these zones behind the, there's a mechanical room on the first floor and a maintenance room kind of flanking the main community room, and we'll have a couple of condensing units back here that will feed into the center area, because it really is a few mechanical units, two or three per floor max, that have to feed those hallways in those center areas.
Going to be inside the building or outside?
No, behind the building, between the building and 104.
So are they shown on the map?
They're in this green zone here. I don't think we've got boxes on this plan showing them. This one is zoomed out too far to show it. I don't think we've done a good job showing those on that plan. So we're going to need to add those to that plan.
And then you just handed us what everybody's been wondering about these, this paver.
The paver, yes.
So I looked at it, it doesn't say a warranty on here, or did I miss it?
That is a, I'm assuming it's a general product data from their website. The warranties are typically separate documents.
So do you know what the warranty I?
I do not.
I think that was one of the questions we had at the workshop, trying to remember.
I mean, the property owner will be in charge of maintaining that and making sure it's adequate every year, so we'll make sure that it's safe.
Those are the questions I had at this point. Mr. Richards?
Thanks for the changes from the workshop. The, on the lighting plan, it looks like there's a little bit of spillage going out onto Hulda Park, and I know that there's a house right there on the plan that you guys have given us.
Which map are you looking at?
Hang on. On C130, if you look at Hulda Park. See, there's 1.5 spillage going on there. Are those going to be shielded over there, or what are we doing for those part, that part?
That pole could be moved a little to the north to help prevent that, but that's towards the right of way of Hulda Park, so it's not necessarily in the private property part, but we can, it is shielded, so we'll have to push that forward a little more to get that at zero at the property line.
Okay. And not that I'm an expert at the lighting by any means.
There's two pretty close together there, so maybe we can look at reducing that.
Okay. I think that would be helpful to the folks that live right there. On the condenser units in the back, what's going to be housing those?
Those are commonly mounted at grade, and they, again, putting them?
Just like the small units? What are we talking about?
Yeah, they're what you would see at your house. They're typically around two and a half by two and a half square cube, and they'll sit on a small pad a few feet away from the building.
And you imagine six of those?
At most, yes.
Okay. And then they're going to be something to protect them, because there is a road in the back there right for?
No, that road's been pulled away, so there's just pedestrian walkway back there for the residents.
Okay. We talked about the vinyl siding at workshop, we talked about the Conservation Board plan, and I see that you've done a lot of that for us. I think I'm, I'll set Mr. Chair at the moment.
Thank you. Mr. Reed?
Back on the HVAC condensers, I must have my head down. Can you please indicate again on the plan where those are proposed? Sure. We're looking at zones behind the building here, 104 is this zone here. Right in this area, we have elevators and kind of utility room, and there's a green area here. We have some blank wall next to the community room kitchen, and then we have some additional blank wall outside of this mechanical room that we would line those up in that area. They would feed into the building and up to their respective interior units.
Okay, so they'd all be on that north side or the very northeast corner of the building?
Correct.
Okay. You mentioned house shields on the light fixtures. Is that called out specifically on the plan? I didn't see it, but maybe I missed it?
They should be, yeah.
I was looking on C130 and maybe I just missed it, but.
Yeah, I think it's, it's part of the model number, so I'd have to get back to you to tell you exactly how they put that in there, but we did request that they shield those.
But you would have no problem with the condition, just stating that to clarify it?
Absolutely.
Thank you. The, the information that you provided here tonight on the pavers for the grass access road?
Yes.
I don't see any like real technical data on here. It says these are good for walkways, patios, and driveways. Have we confirmed that for sure this can handle the fire truck loading?
Yeah, we will be using the model that they use for fire trucks, yeah, absolutely. The stone, the section that we're creating, it is on the detail sheet 501, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Can you speak a little more? I know there was some supplemental information, I think, that you guys provided regarding the water line and the hydrants and the flows and all of that information. I got this domestic flow, can you just walk us through this a little bit?
Yeah, we're not the mechanic, the mechanical engineer did that. Bergman wasn't part of that team, but I can give you the kind of a quick synopsis. They took the hydrant flow data that was provided from Monroe County Water Authority and calculated the demand the building has during a fire and compared that to the flows that are out there. As they're looking at it now, it's borderline that they may need a fire pump, but as the design progresses for the building, they'll be able to determine that a little closer at that time, but from the mechanical engineer that we talked to, they said they didn't feel that the system on the street needed anything else. Everything was adequate.
Has that mechanical engineer been working with Monroe County Water Authority's engineers?
Yes.
Okay, okay, all right.
And they still have to work with the Fire Department as well as we're finishing their engineering to hydrant locations in the right spot, the plumbing routing for those in the right spot, that's all, needs to be finalized.
Yeah, we still, we've submitted our latest set of plans to the Water Authority. We're still waiting their final comments.
And may I just, just for this board's knowledge, I think we've talked about this in the past, when a project proceeds from a planning review and approval and then on to construction drawings, during the construction review, the Fire Marshal's office will coordinate and invite whoever the corresponding Fire District in, their chief or their representative to review plans, so that the Fire Department also has an opportunity at the construction phase to identify any concerns or things that might need to be addressed as part of their review of the Uniform Building Code.
And just one last point of clarification, you guys have received the Conservation Board comments dated January 12th, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'm good for right now, Mr. Chairman. I just have one more quick question. I would imagine there's going to be transformers on this site too from Argenee. Are those listed on here?
Yeah, I'm looking for the right thing, right? Yeah, we have a transformer location shown in the, again, towards the back of the building right now. The reality is, all we can ever do at this stage is show our best guess. Argenee is going to tell us where that is, and that is always how it works unfortunately, and it typically needs to be a place where they can service it, and then we do our best to screen it from people who don't want to look at it, which is everyone living at the building and everyone nearby as best we can. But that is our proposed location back there right now, and that's the best we can offer at this time.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, with that, or anything else you want to present?
No, I'll say it.
Okay, so please take a seat.
Great, thank you.
So just a couple of things I want to make sure everybody understands. There is no decision that the planning board can legally make that would undo any of the previous approvals granted for this project. The proposed use of the site was deemed legal by the town board's rezoning, and the variance for the proposed building height and number of parking spaces were approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals. The application before the planning board is for subdivision of the land, site plan approval, and the EPod permitting. This board will look at how and where the lot lines are being redrawn, how the site is laid out, and connects to adjacent road networks, the appearance, location, and orientation of the building and site amenities, and ensure the development minimizes impacts to any protected natural features and the environment. We welcome all comments and feedback during the public hearing. However, it would be helpful if your comments would be directed to the issues and matters that we can legally review and consider. Also, please remember that all comments need to be directed to the board and not the applicant. Direct them to the board, and I ask that you please collect your thoughts, and we only allow everybody to come up one time to the podium. So with that, I'd like to open up the public hearing. You can, guys can form a line if you'd like, just to make it, be a skirt line.
Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Bob Finocchio. I live at 303 Carl Sam Drive, which butts right up against the proposed property. Now that we know all this new information, all my notes are no good. But one thing I want to, I want to say about this. The walkways to Carl Sam Drive, you know what's going to happen over there with those walkways? We're going to have people parking on Carl Sam Drive to get to the back of the building easier than it is going to go down all the way and around and try to find a parking spot with only 68 spots. We're going to have people there. They're going to go there, they're going to walk through. I suggest they get rid of those walking places. You don't need them over there to come. Why do we need walking spaces to Carl Sam? The people are going to walk to Carl Sam? What are they going to do on Carl Sam? There's no stores, there's nothing to do over there. So I don't think we need them, walking spaces. If they want to put them on the other street, Hulda, because there's going to be more traffic there, fang. I don't think they're needed over there. The height of the building, we can't do anything now because that's already been done. Arundic quite better start getting their stuff together because we have too many senior citizen places now. We have five or six right on Culver Road, Brower Road, this one here, 80 units, 157 at the mall. Now I think St. Cecilia is going to have 60 to 80 units. We're getting overloaded with senior, senior housing, and nothing that they can go in and buy a little house and stay in their neighborhood. If you're in a bit colonial, you want to cut, go down to a little house, there's nothing there. There's nothing new, because we keep changing things from R1, R5, R7. Not the right way to go. This town is going backwards. If you go to Webster, go to Penfield, and I work out in Webster and Penfield in real estate, you'll see there's a lot of subdivisions that have small, little patio homes, but the money's not there for the land. And in Arundic quite, the owners of the land are trying to get as much as they can, and if they can get an R5 or a multi-dwelling property, that's where they're going to go for. And that's what's happening now over here. And I just hope you guys consider the residents, because the people on Haverly, Whitlock, Wall Road, Carl Sam Drive, Carl Sam Circles are not happy with this whole project. I've seen the town turn down many projects that were better than this one. I hope you take the neighbors and Arundic quite residents in consideration and deny this project as drawn. We just found out tonight that Culver Road entrance is not there anymore. Is that the truth?
Yes, we'll, we'll address all the questions.
Okay, okay. That puts another burden, because this is where we started from, from, from Hulda Parkway. That's, that's a tough area to get those emergency vehicles in and out. With all the kids on that street, there's no sidewalks on that street. There's going to be a problem, I could tell you that now. There's going to be problems. That property, the whole Wambach property, should have been used for Arundic quite senior center and maybe some smaller projects, not three-story projects, for senior living. That would have been a great property. We didn't have to rent the mall, which is going to be rented. We would have owned it. Arundic quite would have owned that, but that's nor here nor there anymore, but I think that's all I got to say for now, and I hope you guys do the right thing.
Next, please.
My name is Patricia Olandisi. I live at 1125 Whitlock Road. I've been there for 52 years. Now, the gentleman before me has said what I... Now, the gentleman before me has said what I had planned to say, but you, it, it doesn't hurt for me to say it again since it's on my mind. Um, yes, it is true that, uh, St. Cecilia's Church is going forward and is going to build a senior center onto the back of our school that has been closed for many years. So now we will have traffic coming down Brower for another 70 units. They will not be subsidized, but they are for senior citizens. And also, I like to reiterate, my main idea against the whole project, which I understand is here again, is the traffic coming and going down Hulda. Now, I live a few houses past Hulda away from Culver Road. So I'm not even one of the people that will be, uh, hurt directly. I'm a few houses away from the main in and out of Hulda. We do not have sidewalks. We do have the grammar school children walking up and down our streets. I have a dog and I know there's seven to eight other people that walk their dogs on the streets since we don't have sidewalks and it's going to be very difficult. I am, I do not have a fenced yard, so I'm in the front of my house five to six times a day with my little 10-pound dog. And there are five to six cars that go down Whitlock within less than five minutes. Because I'm very careful not to let my little dog too close to the street, even though he is always on, um, a, a leash. I don't want him at the gutter area. So the traffic itself, which was my main concern, and then I understood through the grapevine, it was not going to be a concern. Now is that main concern again, traffic. We are just a little street with a majority of old to elderly people. People like to enjoy their neighborhood, walk their neighborhood, and now will not be able to. As we have known in Aranda quite, one in particular, even going to our mailbox is an issue. When we have to cross the street to get our mail, the cars come six inches to us. I think, I don't know how we're going to get our mail. I mean, that may seem simple to you if you don't live on Whitlock or Carl Sam. But it's very important to us, and I said, we are basically, not 100%, but basically our senior citizens. And actually, to have a problem going to your mailbox, I think is very, very important. And to have that entrance and exit on Hulda is ridiculous. I can't even see how the firemen have any desire to go down that little street. And I am curious what they're going to do with the house that is right at Hulda at the corner that has been empty for, I don't, I will just say months and months and months. So I guess that's all I have to say, but as an elderly resident for 52 years in Aranda quite, I am very unhappy with this idea of filling our little quaint little old town with so many senior citizen apartments, since I am a senior citizen. But I do not like the idea of these huge structures all around me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tricia Carroll and I live at 1136 Whitlock. I have a bunch of notes. They're a little bit confused because what I had to say, I guess once I got here, things changed for the difference. First of all, you all give great answers. You all plan this before we even get here and you already know what you're doing. So, so you kind of like, um, are using us to just give us this wonderful input that we get to say and we feel, we don't really even feel good when we get home, okay? Because we don't think anybody has ever listened to us. The gentleman that opened up the conversation, addressed the board, he addressed everybody else, he never said anything about the neighbors. They don't care about the neighbors. They don't care about the people that live in that area that have expressed over and over and over our resentment towards this project. Okay, fine, the project is going to go forward. We already kind of know that because the, the zoning was changed and the variance was changed. And you're just trying to help them build something that, that they know they're going to get, okay? It's all about the board, the developers, and who cares really about our concerns? That we live in the neighborhood, okay? Nobody cares about the residents. It was said that the, the Hulda i- is too narrow, Whitlock is too narrow. There's a ton of traffic on Whitlock. People from Carl Sam, people from the expressway, from Norton Street, they all come through there to get on the expressway. The traffic will be terrible, okay? No matter which end of Whitlock you live on. And actually, I live on the end that doesn't back up to, to Wambach's, okay? So, it's not going to be in my backyard, but it affects me because it's my neighborhood. It's where I've been for 30 years. It's where I have committed all of my neighbors, community and great people, okay? Aranda quite should be working for us, the people that live there. Now, we're going to have like 500 seniors within two years from St. Cecilia's to here to the mall. Why don't you just dig a grave and put us all in a hall? Why don't you welcome new families with children? Other than that, close the schools, because you're not going to need schools anymore if you continue to just let it go to seniors. You know, the rest of these notes, they don't really mean anything. But I, I just have to say that I don't think anybody has ever listened to us, because you knew the plan before we got here. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, my name is Karen Kignina and I live at 370 Carl Sam Drive. And, um, as I've told previous board members, um, I'm opposed to this project and continue to be opposed to this project. And if this project should go forward, um, the neighbors would like the planning board to put in place uh, some protection for the neighborhoods, um, in the final site approval. We'd like to make sure that, um, Carl Sam does not connect into this, um, proposed project site now or in the future, other than emergencies. We'd also like to, um, see that, um, fencing is provided for those, uh, neighbors that are asking for it as well as eliminate the, um, walkways, uh, from the, the project site onto Carl Sam Drive. We'd also like to make sure that, um, they provide planting to obstruct the view of the, of the building for neighbors that request it and, um, any other provisions that neighbors may require to keep the privacy and dignity of our neighborhoods. So I ask that they, as they go forward, that they at some point start to consider, um, the neighbors and the neighborhood and, um, that you make sure that that takes place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Darlene Quatro. I live at 10 Carl Sam Circle West. Um, I would just like to agree with what everyone has said so far, but I'd also ask you to please consider, um, the neighbors and the, the traffic. We have one middle school for all of East Aranda quite, and the only way to get to it is from Whitlock, Heberly or Wall from the other end of Culver Road where all those students are bussed in. So 10 months out of the year, there's school buses going up and down those streets. Most of them don't have, none of them, the three Carl Sam, uh, Heberly, Wall and Whitlock do not have sidewalks from Hulda Park to Culver Road. There's not only bus stops, but the kids that live on those streets are walkers because they're so close to the middle school. So, we've got that added traffic. Emergency vehicles possibly speeding through those streets at any given time for fire or ambulance. Um, I, before we came here tonight, um, we thought that Culver Road was going to be the main entrance to this project and just learned otherwise. We were going to propose the least impact to our neighborhood would be to have Hulda Park be the breakaway and the second entrance for the emergency vehicles and Culver Road be the main entrance would make more sense. It's also closer to Ridge Culver Fire Department and would get there a lot quicker than going all the way down Whitlock to the end and then all the way down Carl Sam to the end. And it would also protect our streets and keep the privacy and the quiet that we've known all these years. I mean, we've lived in, in our, our street's been a dead-end street since inception, 50 years. And we have deer and wildlife and just fields all around us. And to lose all of that is not only a hardship, but it's also going to pose a lot of, um, different concerns in the neighborhood. And having walkways onto our street and inviting people onto our street that don't really have any reason to come to our street invade our privacy that we've had all these years. And, you know, a little history about this street, we have 32 houses on the street and three cul-de-sacs. 75% of those people are the original owners who have lived there over 50 years. My cul-de-sac has four homes, uh, were all the original. I'm, my parents built my house, so I'm kind of a second generation. But the lady next door to me is 93, lives alone. The man next door to her, uh, is 80 and lives by himself, and the couple across the street are retired and in their 70s. All raised their children there and have lived in, in that house 50 years, the original builders. And the entire street is all owned by people over 55 as well. So it's a quiet, nice neighborhood where people walk their, their dogs and just, we just enjoy living there. And we live there by choice because it is a nice area. And we're trying very hard, in spite of this project, to maintain somewhat of a, the neighborhood dignity. So we're just asking you to please consider that when you're looking at these plans and the proposals that they're presenting, to please consider the neighbors that are deeply affected on three streets. Um, it's over 100 homes that are affected by this, not just Carl Sam, but Whitlock, Heberly and Wall as well. And the students that go to the middle school and are bussed and walking. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is, um, Tricia Fagan. I live at 310 Carl Sam Drive. I'll show you where my house is. This, right here is where my house is.
Need to take the microphone.
Give me the microphone, just so we can all hear you and everybody at home can hear you fine.
Thank you. This, this is where my house is, right here. I'm right at the end. Um, and, um, Mrs. Quatro is speaking about, um, the, um, uh, the neighborhood and the original owners. I'm actually just the second owner. Um, this neighborhood is over 50 years old. My house was born, uh, born, my house was built in 1968. And I've been there, this year will be 21 years, and I'm just the second owner. So this is a well-established neighborhood. I would like to try to address some of the things on the postcard, um, the steep slope. Because this is a wooded area, um, and it's been like that for a while. Sometimes I just kind of go for a walk and I happened to go for a walk out in the back and I saw all the staked off, um, area with the pink tape. And the, written on the stake is exactly what it's proposed to be. The one stake said it was going to be the corner of the unit, which, um, which I believe is this. And I actually saw the stake and walked to the slope. And it's four yards, four yards? 40 feet from the slope, which, you know, this slope is eroding. I live right here, my property, this is the, um, the, the sewer, the right-of-way, what is it called? The storm sewers. This, this, all this land, which is my property, it's eroding, eroding, eroding. This is eroding. So, I mean, to be 40 feet just from the slope, it just doesn't seem like it's, you know, far enough or, or smart enough that, I mean, this, this land is going away because of the way that this, the storm runoff is. And it's, it's, so that, I'll, that's my concern with that. And, um, you know, I kind of, there's a lot of people here, no one here is going to stand up and say they're for the property. We've been to three or four of these boards and it's frankly a little confusing. And it's, it's a bit of a groundhog day personally, I feel like, because I feel like we have to continually repeat ourselves of what our objections were. We all came, we all spoke at the very first meeting and said we were against the three-story building and everything we were against about. The last meeting was strictly on the three-story building and it, it was like, what? We, we all discussed that, but what happened was it was a different board. So, I guess my first question is, who is the lead board on this project? I mean, who makes the final decisions? Because we literally have to continually repeat ourselves and say exactly what we're against. Just like what they were all discussing about Hulda. Hulda was discussed at the very first meeting. Then they came back at the, at the second meeting and changed it to Culver and like, oh, well, that's much better. That, that's a less of an impact on this over 50-year-old neighborhood. But now, we're all blindsided because now it's right back at Hulda. It's like, what is going on? How do we, as the neighbors, get invited to these private, uh, round tables? I, I mean, it, it's just, and, and we can't see the minutes, the minutes to the last meeting. The, the minutes of these round tables are not online anywhere, so we have nothing to prepare. So just like Mr. Finocchio said, is he, the first one to speak, he's like, all his notes that he had are garbage because things have changed. They've changed the plans. And I know that you've asked, requested us to, um, gather our thoughts, but when we come and we've gathered our thoughts and we've met and we've discussed and then we come and we see that what's up here is different. It's just hard to gather our thoughts, so I'll, I apologize to the board for rambling. But, um, and, and personally, I, I think this is a little bit backwards. I feel like the board should be presenting to the town residents and the people who live in this neighborhood why you think this project is good for Aranda quite. Why you think this location is a perfect spot for this project in this established, over 50-year-old neighborhood that is not on a main road. And what benefit in taxes does this project bring to Aranda quite? Because I know what I pay in taxes. I pay almost $6,000 in taxes that go to the county, the town and the school. And my house was under $100,000. That's a lot of taxes. So what is this subsidized building going to bring to the town? How does it benefit the town? And as a matter of fact, um, the liaison had said that, uh, at another meeting that this project is in line with the vision of a, what, the board has for Aranda quite. Well, what is that vision? Because as everyone has already discussed, there are a ton of senior living facilities coming in just east of Aranda quite. We're not even west of Aranda quite, I mean, I, excuse me, pardon me, it's one town, but we, we have two separate school districts. So, all these, um, senior living facilities, St. Salomon's is down by Seabreeze. That happens to be an east of Aranda quite school district. The Medley Center is east of Aranda quite school district. St. Cecilia's, east of Aranda quite school district. Brower Road has, has, uh, units, east of Aranda quite school district. This project is in east of Aranda quite school district. What do you think is going to happen to this east of Aranda quite school? That they have now are remodeling their whole, we have the best stadium arguably in the whole state. It's gorgeous. And we, we bring in lots of things to east of Aranda quite, they, they rent out their stadium, they have many events there, that's great. And they're also going to remodel that school? Well, what do you think is going to? Well, what do you think is going to happen in ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road? Do you think these senior citizens who are living in all these units are going to vote to pass a school budget? I don't think so. So you're killing east of Arondacoit, in my opinion. Yes, bring in the young families. What are we doing to attract young people and families who want to live? This, geez, we live right on Lake Ontario. This is a great place. What are we doing to attract people here? And like I said, at the very first time I stood up, you should change the slogan to Arondacoit, a place where you come to die. I mean, it's, it's brutal.
If we could, though, could you please go back to the points that we can?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I digress. But also, so let's talk, I mean, yes, there's certain things on this list, the slope and the environmental. But I'll, I'll also ask, because we talked about the trees here along, along the south side, which is actually Whitlock. But we didn't talk about the trees here, which is along the east side, which actually kind of abuts my property. So are we planting any trees there? Because there's lots of loud condenser units back here. There's the transformer, which it's proposed to be there, but I, I understand our genie has to say where it goes. So I mean, what are we doing for trees here to block my, our view? All right, I think I'm done.
Thank you. Please, please, folks. Anybody else like to address the board?
Yes, can, everyone needs to, I know you're all here.
Please, you have to address the board, please.
Someone needs to speak.
Ma'am.
Please, you have to address the board, please. Go ahead.
So I'm Casey Miller. I live at nine-six-eight, yeah, Whitlock Road. And I have a seven-year-old, my neighbor has a seven-year-old. My neighbor's neighbor has two kids about that age. That's to the left, across the street is Chad. He's got like seven kids, two houses over. New family just moved in a couple of months ago. One of them's in a stroller, one of them's riding a bike with, you know, training wheels. Oh, boy, I'm trying to think of it. So my part of the neighborhood is currently new people moving in with children. The sidewalk happens to be a quarter mile down the road. And no one stops at my stop sign at Whitlock. And you've got a bunch of dumb people driving. And, you know, people have small front yards, small backyards. They try to go for a walk with their dog and their kids. And there's lots of traffic there already, especially when school's in session. And in the morning time when I go to work, I see the kids walking to school. And, you know, after the plow goes through, the road gets even narrower. So we'd love a sidewalk, just for all the kids in this part of the neighborhood. And, I mean, eventually more younger people are going to move in. And, you know, it needs to happen. And, you know, that's about all I got. Just concerned about the, the little ones that are in my part. I mean, that's going to be in my backyard. I mean, I can, my house is on that little poster right there, so I'm in the corner. So I talked to the surveyors on, it was Christmas Eve. They told me about the driveway that was going to be behind the house. That was going to be less traffic. And then here we are, a month later, I guess that's not happening. So I guess sidewalk, that's all I got. Thank you.
I'm Linda Hurtal at two-seventy-two Dunsmore Road. And I'll just say I don't agree with it. And we're thinking of even getting out of Arondacoit now because of it. But I would like to know why it's changed from Culver to Hulda. And if anybody knows what's going on with that house on the corner, the yellow house. It's been empty, I think, since about April. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address? Seeing none, would the applicant like to come back up and address? Oh, we need to close the public hearing. Anybody else we need to address? Close the public hearing. Would the applicant please come back and address some of the comments that were made?
We brought our traffic engineer. We'd like to bring David up, maybe, just he can describe to you the traffic analysis that he performed, let you know how it came out.
Good evening, everyone. I'm David Cruzy with SRF Associates. My home address is sixty-five Summit Street, Fairport, New York. We performed the trip generation and traffic analysis segment of this project. Before we started this project, we scoped it with Monroe County DOT. We initially provided a summary letter with the access out of Culver, revised it with the access on the Hulda. The trip generation that we use, the trip generation data that we used is based on senior multifamily housing. In fact, the numbers that are shown in here are on the more conservative end, given the demographic that's going to be sort of targeted for this, this structure and this, this project. Given that fifty percent of the residents or so will not likely have a vehicle, traffic volumes are going to be less than what has been projected in this letter. We compared this, this letter compares traffic volumes to the former Wombach Garden Center based on available data. This, this traffic, this project, excuse me, is generating almost a hundred trips less per hour, fewer trips per hour in both the AM and PM peak hours. Based on thresholds established by Monroe County DOT for performing traffic analyses to determine the traffic operations at any single, single intersection, we found that this would not warrant the case and that traffic operations would not significantly decrease or create a significant adverse impact to any one intersection. The access point onto Hulda has several benefits, namely reduced curb cuts from an access stand, access management standpoint, traffic, traffic operation standpoint for, on the Culver, reduce curb cuts, reduce potential conflict points. It's notably on a higher volume and higher speed roadway compared to existing streets. This project will utilize an existing street network, grid-like street network, that has access out to multiple arterial and collector roadways, thereby limiting access to any one intersection. And again, improving traffic operations and it's just sound access op, access management techniques. Overall, we didn't find that this project would be a significant, significant adverse impact to the neighborhood or surrounding intersections. If there's any specific questions I can?
There was a, I know that a lot of residents are concerned about emergency vehicles, but we got a letter talking about really low levels of emergency vehicles at similar type locations. So I was wondering if you could, or someone could talk briefly about that.
I'm Peggy Hill with Rochester Management. Excuse me, and I was the one who submitted the letter. We basically took, did a study of many of the communities that we manage and had the emergency divisions or fire departments and emergency ambulance corps provide us with data over three months in terms of the number of emergency calls, both fire and ambulance. And just to give you an example, in a situation where we have a hundred and eighteen units over a three-month period, we had a total of eight calls to the site. For another community that has forty-five units, CDS on Holt Road, it had a total of three calls over three months. Lewis Wolf Boulevard, also in Webster, fifty units. Over the course of three months this summer, there were zero calls. And finally, the most recent one that we just leased up is on Abigail Way, also in Webster. And over the same three-month period, ninety-six units had a total of five calls. So it's relatively, I think it's a lot less than people would come to expect.
Mr. Chair, I just have a question. Can somebody just in plain English, because nobody went in and out of Hulda from Wombach Farm, tell the residents how many cars you expect in an hour going in and out from eight o'clock in the morning until five o'clock in the afternoon? So one o'clock is probably going to look a little different than eight o'clock, right? So why don't you just try and help them understand?
Sure.
What that is going to look like?
Sure, absolutely. From a, we typically look at traffic from a peak hour standpoint. Your, your morning commute times, your evening commute times. So you're seven to nine, four to six. So we've, we've looked at this in that focused hour. So for example, in the morning, this is projecting twelve vehicles entering the facility, fourteen exiting the facility. In the evening, thirteen entering, twelve exiting.
And if we use the street grid, right, that'll be dispersed over the grid versus pushing it all out onto Culver Road with a direct access? Is that what you were saying before?
Correct, they will, there will be more options. Monroe County DOT has preliminarily commented on that. And they, they do endorse the projects that have multiple options or access options to, again, higher, higher functioning roads such as Culver.
And putting them back onto the street grid, how does that differ environmentally from us building a new road? And I don't expect you to answer because you're a traffic guy, but just in general.
No, well, I could answer it in what my opinion would be. And professionally is that you're not building new facilities that need to be maintained. You're utilizing existing facilities that are already there. And related to this new road, you're putting it out to an existing roadway that has four lanes of, of travel, of traffic, between fifteen and seventeen thousand vehicles per day. You're reducing that additional curb cut and potential for conflict points onto that roadway. So you're utilizing existing infrastructure. I can share it off to a?
Sure, so kind of addressing the broader question about the, the change in access point. Two weeks ago at the public workshop meeting with this board, it was, we were questioned about the drive to Culver Road and questioned what led to it, if we could revisit it, which agencies we had spoken with. We spoke with County Department of Transportation. We spoke with the Fire Marshal. We spoke with the Culver Ridge Fire Department. Everyone we spoke with actually was begrudgingly allowing a connection to Culver Road, preferred to use the existing connection on Hulda Park, the public right-of-way that already touches this part of the parcel. The Fire Department specifically was uncomfortable with the long drive to Culver Road. They prefer using the existing grid, using the short connection off of Hulda Park and the hydrant that is already at Hulda Park. The County DOT, same thing, preferred using the existing grid. And some discussions with this board were about the fact that building a new road behind the properties on Whitlock would effectively land-lock them between two roads. And that road would become a permanent feature that any future development on the front half of the Wombach Farm parcel will be using. By not building that road now, those properties on Whitlock Road are not landlocked. And future development on that part of the property is future decisions to be made depending on the appropriately determined use of that property by that property's owner. So there was a lot of concerns from a planning standpoint and from the local Department of Transportation, County DOT and fire departments about that road. And they were all very much in favor of the request to shift it back to Hulda Park that was given to us. So, yeah, I, I understand people's concerns about fire department access, things of that nature. We've actually been told they prefer what has been, we've been requested to do now. And as was just stated, the traffic volumes are actually quite low and the emergency response volumes are actually quite low.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Anything else you'd like to regarding the comments that were made?
I do have one other comment. There was a request about tree screening. We, in response to requests of this board, provided a specific design for tree screening to the south. There was a request about the east side. We had not considered that before tonight. In our minds, we are not disturbing the existing tree cover on that side as much. We are completely open to adding that tree cover. We are, that is, we want to be good neighbors, not bad neighbors. We understand people have concern with this project, but we do want to provide screening, should it be required, on the east side as well.
The, concerning the empty house or vacant house on the corner, it's not part of our project, it's not in our project budget to purchase that house. So it's up to that property owner or bank to, to do whatever they wish with it. So it's not part of this project. Trying to see some other ones. We talked about traffic. Fencing, we can look at fencing if the properties to the south and east request it. We've provided a lot of vegetation on that south edge to help with that vegetation, more of a natural buffer than it is a fence line. On the east side near Carl Sam, we're, we're maintaining a majority of the landscape or existing vegetation on the east side of that pond to help with views into the parcel as well. So it's pretty thickly wooded over there. Steep slopes. We had a geotech report. We had a geotech analyze the soils. They've provided us with details and what we should do for the building to make sure it stays vertical. And we're also providing the required slope stabilization protection that the Conservation Board requested us to do. It's basically a geo-grid plastic material that will go down on that slope to help keep it from eroding. And then we'll cover that with clover.
There is a Conservation Board question that I wanted to follow up on. It's in number one, and it asks about the ratio of trees removed or replaced. Did you have a number for that?
I do not have a number for that. We did not, so, we did not survey every single four-inch caliber tree on site. So I don't, I don't have a number for that. If it's a request of the board, we can provide that. It'll just take us a little bit to make that calculation. We do have a substantial landscape plan with a lot of trees and shrubs.
I think the movement of the roadway also helps you with that calculation. That would have been a significant number of trees.
Yeah, a lot more trees.
A lot, a lot, actually, that would have been removed. And then also, I just, I did want to point out that we didn't really talk about the EPOD. And I, when we went there for the site visit and we looked to see where the EPOD was marked and where the trees are actually were, it was clear to us that the area that was marked EPOD, most of the trees were already removed. And the area that was not EPOD, which is the area where mostly is leaving, is being left untouched, is where the majority of the trees were left. So I just wanted to make sure that that was out.
Thank you. In terms of other comments, I don't know, do you have any other ones, Pam, that you wanted to respond to?
I just wanted to touch briefly on what is the benefit to the town of Arondacoit. And basically, the benefit is that we have seniors in, in Arondacoit and surrounding areas that need housing. It's proven by the market studies that have been performed. It's also supported by the town's comprehensive plan and also a resident of survey, survey amongst the residents themselves. So the needs are there. I see the benefit here is that you have a partner that's committed to this community, this project. I think we've shown it by inviting eight hundred people to meetings before this town process even began. We rented space, invited everyone to come over and stayed as long as people wanted to talk about it. We've also shown a lot of flexibility, I think, in, in modifying the plans. And that's because we want this to be an asset for everybody. So by standing here and making changes and coming back and, and recognizing that the ideas that came up have been great ideas. So that's why it's worthy of making these changes. But all of that, you know, it does cost money in development and so forth. We're nonprofits, the bank is not unlimited. But I hope it just sends a message that we are a caring partner in this community. I guarantee you that our, we're very prudent managers in terms of property manager and caring for our residents as well. So I just want to reassure the neighbors that we, we do care about the neighbors and the property, and we want this to be an asset for everybody.
Thank you. I noticed several of the neighbors mentioned the sidewalk to Carlson. So could you tell how that fits into your design, the benefits of it?
Well, I think we like to have our residents have access to the neighbors, even though there are no sidewalks there. But at least they're not landlocked to just one area. So we like to have, and it's proper planning to provide pedestrian access to projects. Most boards ask us to provide pedestrian access to these private properties, and we do that. So it's, it's something we want to do for our residents and for the community as well. So if the board feels that that exit should be terminated, we'll, we'll consider that.
I believe that was also a request from Monroe County, was it not? In the initial feedback, they had said something about pedestrian connections and access to public transportation. and, um, access to public transportation and the like.
Yes.
Would you guys just address the, uh, um, Mr. Miller's comment about the sidewalks on the street? I know that we had briefly talked about that at workshop. And that was a desire of this board and perhaps you guys would be amenable to looking at that.
Uh, I believe the applicant has said they would look at that opportunity to provide sidewalks along Whitlock, but I guess there's a process that the town requires, uh, to do that, to put sidewalks where there are no sidewalks today. So that process would have to be followed. Um, so I think the applicant has agreed to, to look, go into that with the town and, and explore what would need to be done to provide those sidewalks.
So if we allowed for some encouragement of that, you would be amenable?
We'd be amenable to look at it, yes.
Alright.
Did, um, we get an answer from DPW about that?
Um, so I did, um, have a conversation with the Commissioner of Public Works and, uh, he did, um, drive the area and indicated he would be supportive of, uh, taking the next step to, um, as far as with the approval process would be from the town's perspective. So it's an, it's, uh, it's a, um, out of the gate, it's not, there's no hard or fast answer. It's just that the commissioner was open to exploring the idea.
Just a, a minor clarification on that, everything he said is accurate, that yes, we would, are open to be participating in that process. Uh, the nature of funding these affordable housing projects, the, the funding stream for this project will not pay for sidewalks, not on the project. So that would be a conversation between Rochester Management and the town to go through that process and figure out the right way to do it. It, it cannot be a part of this project, it, there's just no mechanism to do that. But it is, again, a conversation that RMI is open to having and it's a, the right thing to do from a pedestrian connectivity standpoint to have a safe way for people to walk. We're hearing that's even more than we realize as far as children and people walking dogs, that sidewalks are the right thing to do.
Well, and for your residents.
Uh, us as well, yes.
Can, can I ask a follow-up question to your, your onsite sidewalks and paths? Um, I, I believe you stated at one of the previous meetings, um, I watch all the zoning board meetings as well, so I'm not even sure which meeting it was at this point, but I, I believe, uh, the applicant stated that you guys have no problem, it's not like these sidewalks are closed off only for your residents to use. These are also for local residents to use. And, and I believe at, at least one of the meetings, I, I do recall, uh, at least one resident stating that, that they walk this site today. Um, so I, I thought that was a good comment.
Yeah, I, I agree and, and one of our tours on, I think that Saturday, we did see one of the residents walking her dog. And that was the idea in having this, is not only connect, having our residents connect, but in our sites, we typically have neighbors walking through, it's a nice big circle there to walk their dog. So it goes both ways. And honestly, at the end of the day, if it's something that the town itself says it's not appropriate, then we'll obviously understand, but it goes both ways, really.
Thank you.
Can somebody just, um, point me in the direction of what the gate looks like on Carl Sam? What map that's on?
Uh, that's a good question. We were envisioning a pipe bollard type gate in the shape of a Y that would just be...
Yeah, can I take a look at it?
Can, I don't have it, I don't know if we have it in the drawings, that's a good question.
I've left some things up to some of the developers and some of them have turned out better than others.
Okay, we can provide the detail if it's not already on the plan.
Okay.
Anything else? Anything else you'd like to add to?
I think we're all set, thank you.
Thank you. Please have a seat.
Mr. Chair, I have a question probably for council. Um, if we wanted to leave the door open to them looking into that sidewalk on Whitlock, but obviously can't make it a condition, huh, what would be a way that we could? Is there anything we could do there?
I don't, the board doesn't have any, uh, mechanisms to enforce anything other than the approval and the, and the conditions that go with it, I think is probably the best answer I can give you.
Well, in the past, we've done recommendations.
You can...
Yeah, which are not the same effect as a condition.
Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be enforceable, you're certainly free to add that, but, uh, you wouldn't be able to, wouldn't be able to require, hold them to it or require them to do anything after the approval is issued.
I think that that might be a good idea based on the feedback that we heard from the residents. Uh, at least leaving the recommendation so that if someone were to look at it in the future to determine whether or not the sidewalk was needed, we could, that these recommendations would be part of this and hopefully support that conclusion.
It was something that we discussed, I think, at the, uh, workshop with, I think, everybody basically agreed that that would be a good thing, not only for the residents that are currently there, but for the new residents that are gonna be joining the neighborhood.
I agree.
There's no other comments by the board members, um, carry through the role of the, uh, the seeker.
I'm happy to do that. Um, in front of you, you should have a draft, uh, part two and part three, um, environmental assessment form. Um, part two just lists out the potential, um, the various topics of, uh, potential impact. There are eleven categories. Um, in, uh, for part three, you'll note the narrative that was attached, um, that, that relates specifically to the approval before this board. It's for site plan approval, um, subdivision and EPOD permitting. It's an unlisted action, uh, pursuant to seeker. And as we look at the potential impacts associated with the project, we tend to focus on the areas or, or topics or issues that are most relevant to what this board is looking at. Uh, first would be potential to impact to land use and char- uh, community character. Um, multifamily housing is a permitted use in the R five zoning district, which, um, this particular parcel is. Um, the intensity of the land use associated, um, with the scale of multifamily residential development um, is not expected, uh, to have a significant impact, um, on the property or the, or the area. Couple of things to note is the proposed density for the project is actually within the code requirements. No variance was needed. They're putting on, eh, they had actually more units potentially available to them based on the, uh, calculation for, um, for density. Um, and so that's one, one consideration. The, by, by using a three-story, um, approach and minimizing the parking, um, on the site and not meeting the code requirement, they, both of which with required zoning variances, they're actually minimizing the area of disturbance on the parcel, minimizing in the, uh, amount of impervious surface, increasing green space area, which all have positive impacts, um, on the, for the, as far as the project goes. Um, this project will increase both, um, senior housing and it increases, um, mo- the type of housing available in the town. Both of those were identified speci- very specifically in the comprehensive plan as, uh, goals. And the proposed, um, design of the project is in keeping with the comprehensive master plan's design standards. Um, so, you know, if you look at the, the building materials and the, um, the, the variation in the design of the facade as well as some of the site amenities, all of those kinds of things were outlined in the comprehensive master plan. Um, with the, um, the proposed access to Hulda Park, um, it's utilizing an existing, uh, street network, um, and now on to impact to land. The project be, based on the size of the parcel is subject to a s- um, stormwater pollution prevention plan, known affectionately as SWIP. Um, that helps to make sure that the modification to land is gonna conform with all of New York State regulations as far as stormwater management. Um, because of the, um, the issues with the EPOD on site, the extra care and, and, and concern is being taken with design in and around those natural features. Um, so we didn't see anything as far as with this development, um, that would present a moderate or large, um, adverse impact. Um, in looking at traffic, the, although eighty units might raise concern, the type of development, um, being a senior housing facility is, um, associated with a very low trip generation. And so the, the, it's a low trip generation and it's a low trip generation that can be absorbed onto multiple adjacent streets, um, in an, in an existing grid, um, street grid. The, and even, and the other factor is that it's, um, a short walk, um, to, uh, Culver Road, which is a major thoroughfare that's got public transit. Um, and by a, by a close walk, I mean even using the lowest pedestrian rates, um, as far as speed, um, feet per second. Um, there's a varying range of, of speeds we can use and using the lowest that was identified by the Federal Highway Administration for, uh, seniors of two point eight. And that's really low, cause three point oh is the, the industry standard for, um, traffic signalization. This is a seven or eight minute walk to a, a major roadway. Um, the potential impacts to utility and energy use, there is sufficient supply of water, um, electricity, all of those things can easily be accessed at the site. Um, we look at the potential impact to community resources. Um, we've, this board's received testimony, um, and data information about calls for service at other similar, even larger, um, developments. So we're not anticipating that calls for service are going to rise to the level of being a concern. The project's gonna conform with all applicable build, applicable building and fire code requirements. The project includes fire sprinklers and fire alarms. During the review process, modifications to the site and building were made, uh, to address some of the operational uh, concerns and issues that were raised by the Ridge Culver Fire District. Um, and then continuing that, there'll be further opportunities for collaboration and operational improvement during the construction phase. So again, nothing, all the, I, any potential, um, impacts are either nonexistent or small. None rose to the level of being, um, large or moderate. And so for that, um, based on the, uh, evaluation of all the impacts, recommending a negative declaration.
Any questions for the town staff on that?
So I, I, I have a question and for staff and I'm not sure that you're gonna be able to answer this.
Oh, these are my favorite, go ahead.
So I'm setting you up.
Okay.
Um...
It either looked really good or really bad, but go ahead, thanks.
So, so the, the little extension on Hulda that basically dead ends into this property that was never developed. Was there any plans, to your knowledge, that ever came to the town for any single-family residential development or anything to extend through there?
What I can relay, I love that I'm gonna have an answer to this question. So, um, what I can relay is this, when the application was first presented to the town board, the site plan that went along with that rezoning application, and it's not the full set of site plan that is before this board, but the conceptual site plan showed the access point to Hulda Road. And during the conversation and the public hearing that was conducted at the town board level, the idea of a Culver Road, uh, new roadway or access point came up. Monroe County DOT said, and in communication with the applicant, inquiring about a Culver Road connection, that the street system was set up with Hulda Park intended to be a stub road. It wasn't built as a cul-de-sac. And so you can tell by the design of the road that it was always intended to, to connect to that large parcel and allow for future redevelopment. Um, that, and so in both cases, because it wasn't designed as a cul-de-sac, it wasn't in, it was always intended to service future redevelopment of that very large swath of land. That was Monroe County DOT's comment. And then the question was, can it, that was always the preference. Culver Road was sort of allowed, but the, the preference was to use, utilize the existing street grid. Um, and I, I don't, I'm not aware of any specific, um, redevelopment plans related to future single-family homes in that, I don't know if any ever came to the town.
I'm just curious, cause single-family would drive a higher traffic count than what we're talking about.
Single-family would be a significantly higher traffic count if it were, if you could develop the available land that's there now. Um, it would be a sig- it would, the trip generation would exceed, likely would exceed what the farm stand, um, trip generation. And the memo that, the most recent memo that was provided, there was a comparison between the senior housing use and the former farm stand use. And this proposed project is less than by about a quarter or more. Um, about twenty-five percent of what was prior.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Based on that, I'll go ahead and make a motion on seeker. Unless anybody, okay. So in regards to, uh, twenty-five ninety and twenty-six sixty-two Culver Road, case number PB one-nine-one-two-dash-one. In regards to seeker determination, it would be an unlisted action, negative declaration. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have all ayes, I just wanna point out that Mr. Evelyn recused himself and Ms. Murray is absent. So it's one, two, three, four. Yes.
Mr. Evelyn is just absent, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on one second.
He's recused himself on this.
But he's absent tonight, he's not here.
Absent.
Count him as absent.
Oh, count him as absent?
Absent, yes, sir.
So it passes sixth to zero, but did you want me to make another amendment beforehand? So I, so I'm gonna amend the motion to ensure that we include part two and part three.
That's probably an excellent idea. Based on the information provided in part two and part three...
Uh, so I got the motion out there with that, do you second that?
I do.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So it passes sixth. Zero nay, one absent. I will entertain a motion now regarding the...
So, m- Mr. Chairman, um, obviously...
Several, several...
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna hear what the board's general feelings are, but I, I have written down in, in listening to the, the residents' comments and some of the applicants' responses, I've written down a number of things that I feel are still lacking on the plans.
I have a couple too, so yeah.
That, that I would kind of like to see added to the plans. Some, some of them, I think, would be easily, uh, handled by a condition and some not so much. Um, so can, can I just run through what I jotted down for the board's consideration?
Yes.
Um, uh, I think a survey per the Conservation Board's comment, number one, about tree size and ratio, I think, is important when we're making the EPOD determination.
So you want a survey of the trees?
Yep.
That are staying and which ones are being removed?
Correct, and the ratio per the, the way that it was written in the Conservation Board's comment, number one.
So read it to me, how do you want it to read?
Um...
I don't know that we're there yet.
Yeah, I'm not, I was, I'm trying to just make a...
Oh, you're just trying to get the ideas?
I'm talking, I guess, right now, more than anything.
Yeah, this is not a motion.
Yeah.
I know, but I wanna get ready.
Um, a, 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 a gate detail for the gate at Carl Sam? That the, uh, HVAC condensers discussed tonight be shown on the plan and be indicated how they will be screened? I would like to see a note added, um, that the, once determined the final location of the transformer, that it be screened from residential view. Because the applicant's correct, they have no control over that, that's our genie and it could get moved and I'd like to see it screened. For making changes, I would like a specific note added that house shields will be provided, uh, on all light fixtures.
What kinda shields, I'm sorry?
Uh, house shields.
House shields. Go ahead.
That the light pull... That the light pole at the northeast corner of Hulda be reviewed to adjust foot candle And that additional evergreen trees be added on the east side to screen residents on Carlsam, just like the applicant added to screen the houses on Whitlock.
On the east side?
Yes. Those were, those were my comments, yes.
So, I heard something said about...
Can I just ask for clarification or am I, am I allowed to speak still or can I just ask for clarification?
Not normal.
Okay.
But since we haven't started the motion yet, go ahead.
The tree survey, can we limit it to so many feet within the property line? Because there's a lot of trees on site. And I think the idea is to preserve the trees along the outer edge. So if we could limit that distance to something, it would benefit us, I think, in having a survey, an entire, entire survey of trees that are all coming down anyway.
Mr. Huber, you brought that up, so...
I brought that up as due diligence to the time and effort that conservation board puts into their comments, and I appreciate it.
I do, I do too.
But my thought on it, as I followed up with in the second comment, was to highlight that they had brought that up as a comment, to recognize it as a comment, but then to sort of address it by pointing out that the roadway was remo, was being removed, which is saving way more trees and I think that we can even really contemplate on this other parcel. So for that reason, I was willing, I kind of let that go. Because I thought that that was, that was fair because...
And because of the robust landscaping plan.
And, yeah, this, this group has really put through a really robust landscaping plan comparative to other projects. But, you know, namely, that roadway, when, when we stood there and stood at the site plan and looked down and saw where that roadway was going, it was clear that that's where most of the trees that are left on the property were now.
Agreed.
And that, that, those are my thoughts.
Yep, no, I, I, I agree with Mr. Huber and I think I would, I'd be okay with removing that requirement.
Anything else before you sit down? Okay.
Might be your last bite at the apple.
Sorry, it's all I can hear over here.
Yeah, if you could...
I'm going to go, I'll go let folks know.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. I heard something about final comments from the water authority, I don't think we have to make that a condition, correct?
They won't, no one can get a permit unless, they won't be able to move to a building permit without those agency reviews.
Okay. And then I also heard something about fencing to the south. If you remember, the applicant said they were willing to discuss that. I don't know how we want to address that as a board.
I mean, my opinion, that based on the landscaping that was added in the evergreens, I, I, I think those provide a much, much nicer natural barrier than a fence would, but...
I think it's easier to maintain in the long run than the fence will be.
Well, I don't disagree, I just, I know it was offered on, asked and offered, so I wanted to make sure we addressed it.
I, 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 I'm indifferent. I, I think that there's benefits to the fence because it's an immediate screen, right? When you plant the trees, it's going to take a while. Also, I, I will always consistently worry that a lot of trees get planted. We see this many times in our projects and we go back a year later and they've died. So, but that being said, I would defer to the rest of the board.
Yeah, and I, I mean, for, for me, if, if we're going to impose fencing, and I'm not saying I'm in support of that, I'm just saying if, if we were, then I think the applicant honestly could remove the evergreen trees that we just added. Because it's, it's, it's a moot point at that point, there's no point in putting them on. It, it doesn't support their landscaping plan, which they've done a really good job around their building.
Fair enough. And I would say, I would say that with your comment, that I would lean towards the trees considering the fact of the number of removals that are going to take place.
So I guess my question was more around, if a resident wants a fence and the applicant's willing, how do we put a condition around that? Are we saying we don't want fences?
I know.
That's, I heard from you guys.
Sure.
I'm kind of indifferent myself, but I'm just trying to, you know, look at the, everybody's points.
I don't know how you, how you condition that and how you take a survey of that. Which is why I felt that the trees provided a better, you know, buffer for everyone and then it's not a, one, one resident got it, another one didn't, or they wanted this type and they got that, you know, that, that sort of scenario.
And then we have to think of a timeline. I mean, how long do we give somebody to request the fence and...
Not there yet, not there yet.
Okay.
Mr. Palermo?
There's, there's no comparison between the evergreens they're proposing and a fence. I mean, there's just, you go to, just look at the trees in Evergreen Quay and what a wonderful job they do and me, I'm just opposed to a fence.
Okay. Ms. Holmbeck?
Is it my neighbor?
Take it. Either you're indifferent to?
I don't...
Excuse me, Mary, just need you to use the microphone for the viewing audience.
I agree with Mr. Palermo on the evergreen.
I think that addresses it then. Okay. Any other comments on that?
I, I do think that the request to add the same type of screening on the east side of the parcel, along what would be on the north side of Carlsam, against that first property there is reasonable. So perhaps that could be added, to add another one of those. It looks like they have them in groups of like three, so maybe two groups of three along there. It seems like the applicant was willing to do that.
So you're putting a little bit more specific?
I'm hesitant to put in a number of two groups of three without being out there and looking at it.
Quite, quite honestly, I, I, I think based on what I heard residents saying, that the, the east side should be shielded with evergreens, the same way the south side was, from where the trees currently stop at the southeast corner, up to the access road and then around the top of the, to the top of the pond. And that would shield all residents, again, we're not playing favorites with the one on the corner here, that whatever, it would shield all. And, and you talk about a couple of clusters, I don't know if it's two, three, or maybe four. I agree, I wouldn't put a number, I would just say, same, same design, but I would, I would like to see it carried all the way up to the north side of the pond.
Okay.
So it had the ro, same robust for, for both?
I was just trying to be really clear in what we were saying so that if it became a condition, it was easy to say you did or did not.
I'm not sure that I want to see it again.
Yeah, I guess for me, I wasn't heading towards conditions, I was unfortunately heading towards looking for revisions on a plan. To, because I don't know how we can appease and make sure that we're, we're getting these little finite things done correctly through conditions. We do conditions a lot.
I know.
I was just going to ask that question. So you wanted the detail on, of the gate on Carlsom Road?
Yep.
But then do you want the town staff to approve it? What, what do we want to do with that?
No, I want to see it.
Before you approve it?
Yeah.
I wanted to see it tonight.
We have asked for that in the past. This isn't the first time we've asked for that.
Oh, okay.
So I mean, I, that's why I wasn't heading towards, let's try to condition this and come up with approval, I was heading towards...
That's not something you would trust the town staff to say it was a good design?
I would trust the town staff...
I'm not making any opinion here, I'm just asking.
I would trust us being able to look at it also. And I think that that's where we're at with this, when we're asking for a site plan. And we did bring this up at the workshop, it's not new.
Isn't it possible for us to approve components, you know, like we've done this before, where we've approved, you know, 90% of something and said you have to come back for the last 10%? You know what I'm talking about?
I would say that we could do that, but we're not approving the project when we do that.
Yeah, most, most generally that would, it would have to be a...
If I still got a condition that you've got to come back to me before you can do it, you're still going to have to come back to me. And I think that there's a few small things, but they're small details and I feel that this board, um, time and again, has placed some trust out there and to the developers that we've not always enjoyed the same reciprocal trust. And I think that everybody has a good intention in mind here, but it's also a good way for us to make sure that the neighbors are getting what we think that, we hope that they need.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I feel that way on, on this project because, you know, this has gone through so many different boards, that's not here nor there at this point. Uh, we can't even talk about most of those things because we don't have the right, these are the things we do have the right to talk about. And I think I'd like to see them to make sure that we're, we're getting them right for the residents. That's my opinion.
I'm fine with that, but I also think, well, I'm okay with that. We've done it before with town approval, so...
Understood, understood.
I, I have no issue. Would you like to speak, the town?
Well, one of the, one of the options that we could, the board could consider, and I'm just throwing it out there as an option, if you were feeling like you needed to see the details and didn't feel comfortable approving, you could have, one option would be to have, provide the conditional approval that these, what these changes or these details being provided to town, for, for the review by town staff. Town staff, I could, I would be able to bring it to a workshop meeting and have you review the details as submitted to us. And at the workshop, which is a public meeting, they are posted on the town's website when the dates are, and so they're open to the public. And so certainly, if that was going to be reviewed, then the board, if you felt like you needed to come back to the board and make a form, you know, reopen the application, you would be able to do that. But you'd be able to, the board would be able to look at the, the detail provided.
What mechanism would we use to do that? Would we withdraw our condition, our support, our support of the application?
So I think it would just, you know, I'm, I'm going to look to our deputy town attorney, but it would, similar to granting town staff or the town engineer, you know, final approval or review, it would be town staff, uh, final approval with board's consent at a workshop meeting.
But it would be final approval by the board?
Correct.
We'd want to sign off on it?
Correct, on those details.
So that's why I'm not sure about the mechanism, I'm sure the attorney can help us a lot more with that.
Right. Or you can just wait and...
I mean, you, you know, obviously, you can condition it on, on staff approval. I've never heard of a board conditioning it on staff approval with following, which is, would need to be followed by the board's consent. So, uh, that does just sound like you haven't given an approval. You, you can certainly do that, but I don't, I don't know whether that, that would actually be considered an approval or not. That might just be the same as, as tabling it. So, you know, I, you know, I guess I would, I would suggest that you stay away from that route.
So our two choices are ask them to come back with all the details or allow town approval. I think I know which way you two are leaning, but I don't want to say it.
We, we can't approve except for and then list specific parts that are not...
Or could you do preliminary at this meeting and then final at the next meeting? So typically, this board combines preliminary and final. Many other planning boards across Monroe County and this New York State, when honestly, you can split that, you can do preliminary, similar to what we've done with some of the other multi-phased projects, where they get preliminary site plan approval for the whole thing and then come back for final. So we could, could look at that as an option as well. If you felt, generally speaking, good about the whole thing, but need those final details in order to grant final, that's another way to, to approach it.
That's right. And the, and the code actually provides for a preliminary and final site plan approval, so you're free to do that. I think the problem with, um, from the applicant's standpoint with approving part of the project is that they can't do anything with that, and so it's not like they could pull a building permit. So I don't know that that helps them. I think if you want, if you're not comfortable with part of the project, I don't think that you want to approve it at all.
So, so what does giving them preliminary approval allow them to do?
I, I think it only allows them to come back for final approval. That's my, that's my understanding, so it's just...
If you adjourned it, it would amount to the same thing.
Uh, yeah, functionally, yeah, it's, it's just not, they don't have a final approval yet, so they can't go get their building permit. The, the process is designed for them to come in with a preliminary, it, it, spelled out in the code, come in with a preliminary application, then you approve the preliminary application with, with changes. And that they, that they come back and they, with the changes that you've asked for, and then you've given them the final approval, which is sort of how you've done it anyways.
Yeah, right.
So...
Okay. I think that giving them preliminary with listing out the changes sounds exactly like what we need to do.
At least we have it documented.
I'm okay with that.
We're fine with that. I mean, I think that's a good, healthy way to go.
Exactly what I was sort of trying to do, I think.
So who would like to make the preliminary motion?
I will...
Uh, you all pointed at me.
Go ahead, no second.
All right, let me see if I can get this right. Um, do you have the agenda handy?
Do you have an agenda?
I didn't get an application number.
Can I just have your yellow...
You want me to give it a shot?
It's on it, actually.
Yeah, let me grab it.
It's the only board...
I'll try this, I'm going to try the motion.
All right.
Okay. In regards to 2590 and 2662 Culver Road, case number PB 1912, motion is to provide preliminary site plan approval with the following, would these be conditions or recommendations, conditions? What would these be? Requirements?
You, yeah, requirements or conditions, yep.
Following requirements slash conditions. We require to see the gate detail on Carlsom Road. We want to see the HVAC condensers shown on the plan. We want the final location of the transformer to be screened. We want house shields on all the light fixtures. We want the light pole on the northeast corner of the plan to be revi, uh, I didn't catch this right, to be reviewed.
North corner of Hulda.
That's the corner of Hulda.
Yeah.
To be reviewed, adjusted for candle spillage. And we want, uh, we're requiring additional evergreens with the same design as on the south side for the east side for screening Carlsom. That's what I captured.
Can we also recommend that the applicant discuss the sidewalk with the town, however we want to put that?
Is that a recommendation in this too?
Yeah, I think we do it this and in the final.
Correct. I would put it in both as a recommendation.
The recommendation is for, I'll just put it down the way I wrote it, is for the applicant and the town to discuss the future sidewalk on Whitlock.
North side of Whitlock from Hulda Park to Culver Road.
I would go ahead and second that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No opposed and one absent. That's for preliminary site approval.
I didn't see anything wrong.
And with that, do we have anything else on the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the minutes from the December 23rd meeting as presented.
I would second that.
Was you here for that?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Whoa, 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 wait. Mr., never mind.
I'm off.
What's that? Sorry.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And one abstaining?
You got Mike absent, don't forget.
And with that?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 We hope you enjoyed this presentation of the Evergreen Quay Planning Board on ICAT Government Access. Access. We hope you enjoyed this presentation of the Aronacoy Planning Board on ICAT Government Access.